Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to my final planning commission meeting. However, today is June 27th, 2022. Recommendations from the planning commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on July 5th, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. First item on the agenda is a roll call. Note that everyone is here. Jerry Travis is here from the board. First item on the agenda is approval of the June 13th, 2022 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? We have the one noted on the minutes themselves. The date is June 13th instead of May 23rd, 2022. That's noted. Any other changes? If none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion. Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item two is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of the consent agenda items three through five, followed by normal commission items six through 14, and our end of meeting items 15 through 19. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Noting none. I entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of today's agenda. Further discussion. Noting none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item, we have the consent agenda. Brittany.
Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 21-04 for Cole or Renee Foster to review living quarters above a garage to be used as a bed and breakfast in an agriculture district. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 21-04 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 21-31 for Cynthia Van Black to review living in a recreational vehicle by while building a single-family residence in a rural residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 21-31 with the applicant's concurrence. And finally, item five is Plan Unit Development Amendment Review PU 08-10 for JK RK Properties, Ryan Caskey, to review the Sunset Range Plan Unit Development in order to add additional lots to the Plan Unit Development that were recently plotted. And this is to recommend approval of the extension of Plan Unit Development PU 08-10 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Are there any items that the board wishes to pull from the agenda? Noting none. We have two people in the audience today. We vote on items three, four, and five at the same time. Does anyone wish to speak to items three, four, and five before we vote in one vote? Noting none. Staff's recommendation is to approve the today's consent agenda items three, four, and five. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second for approval of today's consent agenda. Further discussion. Noting none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item six.
Item six is a road naming request for Diane Byram. It's to name a 40-foot wide access easement providing access to properties located in sections four and five. They would like to name this road Darnell Road. This was rather the route through their interdepartmental review, emergency 911, and Department of Transportation, County Highway. All of them okay with naming this Darnell Road. Thought entertain any questions? This is the location of it. It's essentially off of South 79, and it'll take access to the truck club where that truck club is.
I saw the petition in there, and you had all of the adjacent landowners sign the petition and included that in the packet this time, so thank you for that. Keep me from asking the question, are all the neighbors okay with this? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question. Why are you stopping at that one point? You know, why wouldn't that just?
It'll eventually go through.
Is that where the road itself ends?
Yes.
Right at that drive for those?
And then if it gets future developed through there, it'll continue on.
All right. Thank you.
Further questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Noting none. Staff's recommendation is to approve the naming of the access easement to Darnell Road. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion. Noting none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item seven.
Morning, commissioners. Jason Denison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Amendment 15-09 to amend an existing conditional use permit to add an additional storage unit to the subject property. Applicant and landowner is Reno Gaults Storage LLC under Darren Rains. Location of the property is 24106 Highway 385. It is 7.92 acres, currently zoned highway service district. Existing land uses commercial storage units, accesses off Highway 385, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. When considering amendments, we do look at seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They're on the screen. I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. No, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the use's values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, the requested use should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for use that permitted in the district. Number four, adequate utilities and access roads already exist on the subject property. Number five, the existing approach will provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion on Highway 385. Number six, the current zoning district is highway service district. The requested use will conform to all applicable regulations of the district if this conditional use permit amendment is approved. And lastly, number seven, yes, future land use is identified as highway service district. Storage units are in approved use with an approved conditional use permit. As the property sits today, there are, or there is a mobile home slash caretaker residence, as well as eight permitted storage buildings, six signed permits, an onsite wastewater treatment system with a construction permit and current operating permit. You see a site plan of the property right now. The proposed structure is identified in red. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. A little history on the property. This conditional use permit was originally established in 1996 for one storage structure. It was amended many times since then. So far, it's up to, this would be the 10th allowed structure on that property. You remember earlier this year, you did approve the placement of one additional structure right back in this area. In October 15, or October 15th of 2019, the Board of Adjustment approved vacation of section line VS 1902. August 11th of 2021, a petition to establish an isolated tract to obtain a road easement was filed with Board of Commissioners concerning the location of the proposed buildings in that CUP amendment at that time. And as you can see, this, the vacation of section line occurred on the northern portion of the property. The structure is on the southern portion of the property, so it will not be placed in that area of contention. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 15-09 with conditions.
Did the access easement to the parcel behind this get resolved?
I believe that's still ongoing.
Okay. So the placement of this structure won't cause any issues with that pending item?
Right. So I guess the current status on that, that adjacent landowner is that filed that petition, but he didn't have the adequate number of signatures to actually file it with our office. I believe he's still working to obtain all of those.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I see the billboard signs. I think he's allowed three or something. Billboard, three billboard signs. And I see the overhead picture shows two, and one of them is in the location that the red structure is drawn in. Does that mean he's going to tear it down?
I've actually talked to him since then. He may move this structure to a different portion of the property. They actually did a site visit. It was the first time on the property. They think it might be better suited back towards the east end of the property.
Okay.
But that'll all be addressed during the building permit review.
He headed off my question. I was going to ask whether you guys were going to allow him then to, because of the way we had the rules, he still had to write for three. And I was going to say, if he's tearing it down, let's knock it down to two.
Yeah. Well, we would just get a removal permit for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Noting none. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? None noted. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 15-09 with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion. Seeing none, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eight.
Good morning, commissioners. Madison Rantz, Environmental Planner. Agenda item number eight is Conditional Use Permit CU 22-29 to align accessory structure at garage as a primary structure on the property. The applicant and owner is Angelia and Rosdale. The location is located approximately 0.18 miles north of the intersection of Playhouse Road and Oak Meadows Road. The size is 6.1 acres. It is currently zoned rural residential district. The existing land use is vacant, and there's no special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of the conditional use permit applications. I will read the findings. One, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Two, no, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. A garage is a residential use which conforms with residential uses in the area. Three, no, the requested use should not affect the normal, orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Four, yes, access is off of Playhouse Road. Five, yes, the requested use should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Six, yes, the property is on rural residential district, and accessory structure as a primary use is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. And seven, yes, the future land use is for Ranchet District. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The property is currently vacant of any structures or onsite wastewater systems. It was routed for interdepartmental review. There was no major concerns or comments received. The applicant plans to build a single-family residence on the adjacent property here. The staff has received no objections or concerns regarding this request. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with land uses in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 22-29.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just one. I see that the property owner is going to build their house on an adjacent piece of property. We don't see many of those come through. In other words, this is going to remain the primary structure unless they sell it.
Correct.
Period.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just so I understood that.
Further questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 22-29 with seven conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion. Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item nine.
Good morning again, commissioners. Jason Denison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number nine is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22-14 to amend the comprehensive plan to change future land use from Ranchet District to rural residential district. The applicant is Dale Kurstad. His agent is Davis Engineering. Location of the property is 23938 Highway 385. It is currently 7.19 acres. Access is off Highway 385, and there is 100-year special flood hazard area on the property. When considering rezone requests or comprehensive plan amendments, staff does take into account current zoning within one-half mile of the subject property. Staff found rural residential identified in yellow, planned unit development in blue, agriculture in light green, open space dark green, highway service in red, suburban residential in brown, and the city of Hill City identified on the map in white. We also look at future land use within one-half mile. Staff found rural residential in yellow, planned unit development in blue, open space dark green, highway service in red, suburban residential in brown, and again, the city of Hill City identified in white. Staff also takes into account roads and streets. Staff found there is a private driveway accessing off of Highway 385. Infrastructure is provided by onsite wastewater treatment systems, which is current, or which is common in rural residential districts. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. South Dakota Department of Transportation noted that DOT will not grant additional access from US 16/385. There were no other objections or concerns received. The subject property is currently being subdivided under layout, or layout plan 22-28 in order to create two separate lots, which you can see on the screen, the existing lot on the left and the proposed lot on the right. They're essentially drawing a line through the middle. Proposed Lot A will be 4.138 acres, and Lot B will be three acres. Approval of this request will satisfy a condition of approval and allow the plating process to continue. The applicant has also applied for a rezone of the property to rural residential district. This request appears to be in harmony with existing land uses in the area and the current comprehensive plan due to 2040. With that, staff recommends approval.
My question is in regards to the drain field. Is the drain field that is shown on this map, is that for the shop? And does the house have its own?
I believe they share the same drain field. I would have to double-check that.
So my only concern is having the drain field for the house and the shop on a different lot than the house?
Yeah, I'll have to double-check that to find out exactly.
Sorry, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. They are actually going to disconnect the current drain field from the house, and when they build the new structure, they're going to connect it to the old drain field and then put a new drain field in for the existing house.
Okay. So they have some permits and they'll be coming back?
Not yet, but that's their plan.
Okay. Thank you. Question answered. Further questions for staff?
Just one short one. If they're not going to get an additional access off of 38516, I assume then there's going to be an access dedicated to the existing house and building.
Right. Yep. That's covered on the layout plan as well.
It is on the layout plan. Thank you.
Further questions? Go ahead, Michael.
Jason, you worked with Danny in Hill City. Do they have any desire to annex this in the future? Did they say anything about that?
Nope. No desire to.
Okay. Because I had talked with the head of the console, and he said at one time that particular area, they had thought about it because there, you know, a whole row of houses in there.
Yeah. When I saw this request come through for the layout plan, that was actually the first question I asked.
Okay. Fair enough.
Additional questions? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-14. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion. Noting none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 10.
Agenda item 10 is a subsequent follow-up request. Rezone 22-20 to rezone 7.19 acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. Again, the owner is Dale Kurstad. His agent is Davis Engineering. Location of the property is 23938 Highway 385. It is 7.19 acres. Current land use is residential. Access is off Highway 385, and there is 100-year flood hazard and floodway on the property. Staff does look at the same considerations for a rezone request that we do, comprehensive plan amendments. You can see the current zoning within one-half mile, future land use within one-half mile. Again, the request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and South Dakota Department of Transportation again stated that they will not grant additional access off Highway 16, 385. With that, staff recommends approval.
Questions for staff? No questions? Staff recommends approval of rezone RZ 22-20. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 11.
Good morning again, commissioners. Item 11 is Vacation of Utility and Major Drainage Easements VE 22-01 for JK RK Properties LLC, Ryan Caskey. It's to vacate 20-foot utility and major drainage easements. The reason that they are vacating these are because they are replating these properties. They actually have a final plat on my desk at this point, but they need to vacate these original drainage and utility easements in order to proceed with the plat. So staff is recommending approval of vacation of easement VE 22-01 with one condition.
So my general question is, is all of the 20-foot wide utility and major drainage easements as shown on all of these lots are being removed?
Correct. And they're being reallocated under to the new lot reconfigurations because they reconfigured these lots. So now the drainage easements are on the interior lot lines of the new lots.
Okay. And the 75-foot wide electric transmission line easement is staying?
Yes.
Got it. Further questions for staff?
Just one.
Go ahead, Charlie.
They had like 148 lots out there originally. Do these, or they had less, and these are being added to it now that they're platted?
Right. So they did a plat for 39 lots, and that went through the process and got approved. But in order for us to file the plat, we have to vacate these because they had a note on the plat that said that we vacated with this plat. Well, we can't do that. It has to be a separate action. So that's what the separate action is.
Okay.
And then now with those 39 lots, they're at their max for their PUD.
Okay. They are then what was originally approved for the PUD?
Right.
You were headed already the same place that was.
Yep. So there's three lots left. There's two common lots, and then there's one lot that's owned by Tipton Properties that's taxed egg right now. So if that property gets subdivided at some point, then they're going to have to come in and amend the PUD and do other things. But they are at their max for the number of residential lots out there now.
Thank you, Brittany.
Further questions for staff? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of vacation of easement VE 22-01 with one condition. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Noting none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 12.
Kuzak Environmental Planner. Item 12 is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-15. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from highway service to rural residential district. The applicant and landowner is Rob Livingston. Location of the property is at 16001 West Highway 44. It's currently 9.83 acres. Current zoning is highway service district with an existing land use as a campground. Access is off West Highway 44, and there is a special flood hazard area on the property, Zone A. When reviewing comprehensive plan amendments, we take a look at the current zoning in the area as well as the future land use in the area. The applicant is looking at going to rural residential district, which allows a large lot residential. There is large lot residential in the area. So staff is recommending approval. Oh, sorry. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Access is off West Highway 44, so it appears that the proper infrastructure is in place to have a large lot residential lots in the area. Staff finds no significant issues with the request as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses within the area and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure. So staff is recommending approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-15.
Questions for staff? No homes can be permitted in the tower fall zone, right?
Correct. We're working with the applicant on getting a variance for that utility lot for that fall zone to setbacks to, excuse me, to residential zoning.
Yeah, trunk size can come off of those things and travel aways. Any questions for staff?
Just one. And I didn't see it on his drawing, and I thought it would have. Isn't there a pond in there?
There is on Lot 1, yes. There's, I don't, sorry, I don't have the aerial, but there's a pond that's right, right in here on Lot 1.
I was just, do we have any regulations that would run into that sort of situation that would encumber him in any way?
No, that'd be actually controlled by the state DNR for ponding.
Like the 10-foot fishing rule, that sort of stuff?
Yeah. That, yeah, we don't get into that. That's a state, that'd be a state requirement.
Well, that's what I was kind of heading to in other words, the high water line is, because I think the high water line, and it goes out, I've seen it out a lot bigger than that pond is right now. And I would think it affects the property issue, but if we don't have any, I'm good.
So that would be the high water line going out, that, you know, the pond's going to be in one area. That'll be the special flood hazard area that goes out that far, and that is labeled. This is, I believe that being this line right here is the special flood hazard area.
Yeah, it says flood zone A, so it's been studied. Flood zone X on the other side of the line.
You're saying it would show up on those?
If it's been designated flood zone A, that means it's likely been studied, which means it's in a report. So there should be a hot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Noting none. Staff recommends approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-15. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 13.
Item 13 is rezone RZ 22-21. It is to rezone 9.83 acres from highway service district to rural residential district. Again, the owner and applicant is Rob Livingston. Location of the property is 1600 West Highway 44. Current zoning is highway service district with an existing land use as a campground. Again, access is off West Highway 44, and there is special flood hazard area on the property, Zone A. Again, we look at current and future land use in the area when we're reviewing rezones. Again, there is rural residential within a half-mile, right across the street, actually. There is rural residential. Again, access is off West Highway 44, which is a 20-foot wide paved road with shoulders, and there'll be a 66-foot wide access easement, and then there will be public, or private water and sewer. Again, this was routed around for interdepartmental review, and there were no objections or concerns that were received. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into five lots. Preliminary plat PPL 22-23 will be heard on the next agenda item. And with the approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-15, the future land use will match the rezone request. So with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses within the area. So staff is recommending approval of comprehensive, or rezone RZ 22...
Sorry. Dash 33.
22-33.
Questions on this? Noting none. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of rezone RZ twenty-two dash thirty-three, further The agenda says twenty-two dash two-one, the staff report says twenty-two dash three-three.
Yes, it's supposed to be two-one, three-three is the preliminary plat, that's gonna be on the next item.
Okay, so the rezone, uh, who motioned?
I did.
Motion and second was who?
Me.
Good with the change to twenty-two dash two-one?
Right.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, item fourteen.
Uh, item fourteen is preliminary plan PPL twenty-two dash thirty-three. It is to subdivide to create lots one, two, three, and four, and utility lot of no bad day subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Rob Livingston, the surveyor is all aspects surveying. The location of the property is one-six-zero-zero-one-West Highway forty-four, involves fourteen-point-nine-eight acres. Current zoning is highway service district with an existing land use as a campground. Currently on the property, there are three conditional use permits. One allows an RV park, one allows a telecommunications tower, and one allows a UTV rental. There is special flood hazard area on the property, zone, uh, zone A, and the applicant does have flood plan development permits on the property, and there is a current onsite wastewater treatment system. Proposed lot one will be seven-point-two-three acres and will contain the campground. Lot two will be three-point-seven-one acres and is vacant. Lot three is three-point-zero-six acres and vacant. Lot four is three-point-zero-six acres and vacant, and the utility lot will be one acre and will contain the telecommunications tower. This was round and round for interdepartmental review. There were no major objections or concerns that were received. The applicant will need to obtain the variance for the setback of the telecommunications towers to the property lines. With that, though, staff finds no significant, significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and, and land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval of preliminary plan PPL twenty-two dash thirty-three with conditions, adding, uh, condition, or two conditions. So condition ten would state that the access road be twenty-four feet wide, or the applicant obtain a subdivision regulation variance, and condition eleven, that the applicant construct the road to twenty-four feet wide, or post surety prior to filing the plat at register of deeds.
Just, Cody? I see it's for fourteen-point-nine-eight acres, and we've been working with nine-point-eight-three acres, and we're adding one for a utility lot. That would make it ten-point-eight-three. How do we come up with fourteen-point-nine-eight?
I am honestly not sure. I'll have to change that.
I'm just hoping that that isn't what Mr. Livingston is asking for.
Well, you have seven-point-two-three plus three plus three plus-
So the, the nine, the nine acres for the rezone, he was rezoning the three lots that were three acres apiece?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's where that nine-point-nine-eight acres came from?
Okay, but I added those, the three, oh-six, three-oh-six, three-seven-one, nine-eight-three, then one for a utility lot, that's ten-point-eight-three. Is there another one I'm missing?
Uh, I do not believe so, I believe that is not correct.
The size was-
Though he has four, I only added three lots, he's got four, and then the utility lot, where's the fourth?
That's the one where the RV park is.
That's seven-point-two-three.
I'm, yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, contact the applicant and work with that before we go to the morning commissioners meeting.
That's the only place I was headed with it, just get it balanced out with Rob and tickled.
Just so I'm clear, though, he's, the preliminary plat consists of lot one, two, three, four, and the utility lot.
Correct, yes, there's, there's total five lots, yes.
Okay, great. So really, it would be three-six, three-six-nine?
Mr. Chair, and I assumed on the one utility lot that he wasn't asking for that particular rezone was why it was nine-point-eight-three, as well as the first request was nine-eight-three. In other words, utility lots, uh, different zoning or handling of it, because it's not being built on.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll work with-
I just didn't wanna see an extra whole slot show up in that corner. There's nothing wrong, it's a good idea to go to this direction in that corner, but I didn't wanna authorize him something that I didn't plan.
Yeah, I'm guessing somewhere along the lines, lot one isn't seven acres.
Thank you. If you'll get to the bottom of that, I trust you, Cody, you, you'll nail it.
But lot, lot one would have been rural, has changed to rural residential as well, correct?
No, the only ones that are changing are lots two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four.
So the nine acres that that portion is was correct for the other one, I'm guessing that he's just off on, uh, the seven-point-two-three. That was the information that him and his surveyor submitted to us, so if it's not correct on the rezone part, that'll be, that'll be, it'll, yeah, they'll have to re-advertise and they'll have to go through this process again, but that's the information that the surveyor submitted to us, and that's what, what we ran with.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I'm just being very cautious, there's a lot of activity that's through the twenty years on this particular piece of property, and if we're authorizing these to be rezoned for residential, I don't wanna throw in an extra one that, I think it's gotta be pinned down to the right acreage.
Yeah, well-
Yeah, so the confusing part is he's, we're rezoning the, the three lots, but then it's being replatted with all five lots.
Correct, yes. The utility lot and lot one will remain the highway service, um, and like I said, I will confirm with the surveyor and the applicant before we go to the board, if, uh, the sizes aren't right on what we are rezoning, uh, it'll be, uh, recommended to be denied without prejudice then at the board, and he'll have to re-advertise for the proper, so it'll be back in front of the planning commission if those numbers aren't, aren't correct.
Okay. Further questions?
Yeah, so the, uh, RV park and the youths, they're out the window?
They'll, they'll still be allowed on that lot, because it'll still be highway service.
And one.
On lot one, correct. Lots two, three, and four, since he's rezoning to rural residential, will only allow the rural residential uses with-
And the store will be on one.
Yep, so everything that's existing on the, on the property now, except for the communication tower, will be on lot one, and then the telecommunications tower will be on the utility lot.
Further questions? Noting none, staff recommends approval of preliminary plat PPL twenty-two dash two-five, and there are eleven conditions. One was the access road for twenty-four feet wide, uh, the second one was that the applicant build the twenty-four-foot wide road or post surety, correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll move for discussion.
Move approval?
Yeah, move for approval for a discussion.
Is it? Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Just, um, and, and I know you'll check this out, do you want us to approve this before you do that, or not? We could continue it just as easily and get it done next time.
Yeah, we can, we can continue it, if the planning commission, uh, would like to see it again, but with the proper numbers to make sure that it's accurate.
I would.
Staff would be, uh, in favor of that as well, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a substitute motion to continue this item to the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion and second on the substitute motion. Further discussion?
I'll withdraw the initial motion, so there won't be any conflict.
Further discussion? Current motion is to continue this item to the next meeting, which is what date?
July eleventh.
To the July eleventh meeting. No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item fifteen.
So staff would actually like a motion to reconsider items twelve and thirteen, and continue those as well.
Go along with item fourteen, um, staff is recommending that we, what did you say?
So we'd like, so staff would like to reconsider-
Reconsider twelve and thirteen?
Twelve and thirteen, and make the recommendation that we just continue those as well to the next planning commission meeting.
So you need two, two motions, one to reconsider and then one to-
Yeah, we, we would need one to reconsider and then one each for each of those items, so a total of three different motions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to reconsider items twelve and thirteen.
I'll second it.
Motion and second to reconsider items twelve and thirteen, further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Now we would need a motion to continue item number twelve-
So moved.
-to the July eleventh meeting.
Second.
Motion and second to continue item twelve to the July eleventh meeting, further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. The next item would be a motion to continue item thirteen to the July eleventh meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to continue item thirteen, um, further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're on item fifteen. Good catch Charlie.
Item fifteen is a county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from their June thirteenth meeting. Uh, just a couple items to note, the Plan Unit Development Overlay twenty-two dash zero-six for Katie Swinover and Brett Wallfish was approved with conditions. Four of those conditions were changed and two were added, uh, so they are allowed to essentially have their, um, music school, one time this summer, is going to be reviewed. They can't operate the bed and breakfast till the review, so it will come back to this, uh, commission in the first meeting in August, uh, for the review.
Is there any stipulations on the road?
Um, only if they upgrade, uh, or they allow additional people. So right now, they got approved for one, um, music camp for the summer and four cabins and a bed and breakfast for six people, but they can't operate the bed and breakfast till hap, after the first review. Uh, if they increase the number of music camps and the number of people, um, at the site, and increase the number of people in the bed and breakfast, they do have to improve the road to an eighteen-foot wide road, and they have agreed to that, and I think Travis-
As I was gonna say, but I also put a stipulation on there that had to be stabilized in its current condition, and I do believe Cody was talking about that, uh, as they move forward for their, um, for their drainage, is, was it, was that part of it, that they'll have to address it in there, because what they've got on there now is temporary, but there's gotta be a long-term stabilization depending on whether they expand it or not, is that what I remember correctly?
Correct, Cootiesack, uh, environmental planner, so there, there was some concerns from the neighbors and some of the commissioners with their cutouts that they put in, that they didn't stabilize those, uh, cutouts. They have put erosion control mats on there now as temporary, uh, erosion control, but as part of the, as part of their stormwater permit, uh, any, um, before that can end, before I go on and that permit, they have to meet the, um, proper slope and proper stabilization with vegetation or retaining wall or whatever. Um, and, and I think they have an engineer that's gonna work on that, so whatever the engineer comes up with, um, they'll have to implement before that stormwater permit will end.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Charlie?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Cody, basically then, they've gotta make the investment hoping for the approvals down the road.
Well, so they were, they were approved for their bed and breakfast to have six, um, to have six members in the one camp, um, per year.
Six members?
Si, or sorry, not six members, six, uh, s, uh, six people can, overnight guests can stay at the-
All right.
-bed and breakfast. That was their, they met with the commissioners, and that was kind of their, um, agreement to, to kind of tone back with what they have, but there are some commissioners who have concerns with the bed and breakfast, uh, in, in general, um, so there is op, they're looking at options to actually possibly get rid of the bed and breakfast completely.
I was thinking about the expanding, because they were looking at adding possibly one more and even two more, uh, sessions of the, so they basically gotta complete the work to move forward, is what I was-
Correct, if they wanna have more school sessions or more of the music camps, they have to upgrade the road, if they want more people in the bed and breakfast, they have to upgrade the road. So basically, what they got approved for was one summer camp, so one nine, or three-week group, um, in July.
Yeah, my thought was, I voted in opposition to the request, but they're, they gotta be nice people, that's a, this is a, a real roller that dries for them, it's tough.
Yeah, and they have hired KLJ to do some of the work, to look at the road, to look at some of the erosion and sediment control issues and-
Pretty nice people.
-do some of the stabilization, so they have moved forward with that, and I think they're still gonna do that irregardless, because KLJ's working on that for them.
Thank you, I was just scratching my head, it just sounds like a, a tough business decision to make to do that, to move forward.
But yes, their review will be in front of this commission, the first meeting in August.
Right.
So.
Question. Weren't they going to have some small music buildings, a series of them or something?
Yes, they got approved for four.
Okay.
Ordinance Amendment twenty-two dash zero-seven?
Yes, ordinance amendment twenty-two dash zero-seven to amend the subdivision regulations, um, so there were some amendments to that, so it, um, we took out the requirements for ordinance fourteen, because ordinance fourteen was updated. So ordinance fourteen and the subregs were approved on the twenty-first on the same day, so they will go effective on the same day, so there will be no lapse in-
Perfect.
-timing, so.
Any other significant changes?
Um, I think there was only one change, um, we worked with one of the consultants, and there was one change on the minor and lot line adjustment plat, um, that it would remove the creation of access easements, um, so they could create an access easement, because you can have an access easement for two lots, um, so they thought, going through the preliminary plan, so staff worked with them and kind of found some common ground with that, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. No items from the public, items from staff?
Nope, just wanna big thank you to Hugh Rich and-
Thank you.
You know, you only have to be gone for a year and you can come right back.
That makes me feel good.
I think that was a little bit of a hit there.
Yes, we appreciated all your work and your, um, questions and, you know, keeping good meetings and-
Make my heart feel good.
But no, we appreciate all, all that you've done.
Thank you.
For the years, so, and we'd welcome you back anytime.
Oh, that's nice, could be the other way. Items from the membership?
I have a question to, for Megan, from, from last week, the, or not last week, last meeting about the, us acting as a board of adjustment, that's just for variances and planning type items, not for assessments, am I correct?
No, 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 no. That's a different board altogether, yeah.
And I thought about that and thought, oh.
No, it would just be planning and zoning.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't have anything to do with equalization or any of that stuff.
Okay.
The board, I believe, will still sit as that entity.
I don't think there was any discussion of that being moved off at all.
Brittany, at the first meeting in July, the, the new board, um, will choose the, the, the chair and some other folks, I know I got asked a question about that, um, can you go through that process, just so everyone knows what'll happen at the next meeting?
Sure, so actually, I will run the meeting until the new board, or until the new chair is elected, so we'll go through, um, the beginning of the, um, agenda, uh, then we'll do the elections, so I will run the meeting until that new chair is elected, and once a new chair is elected, then they'll take over running the meeting. So it'll be the normal, and then there'll be elections.
Okay.
So for a chair, vice chair, and second vice chair.
And then how, how will that election happen?
Um, typically, we do by nominations, so there'll be nominations, um, and it'll be up to them, up to you, I guess, how you wanna do it by ballot or just by yea or nay, voice roll.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else from the membership? Well, thank you all, it's, uh, been a pleasure to be up here and, and go through these items every two weeks, so it's been a lot of fun, and I appreciate the hard work, I, I know that everyone, uh, is pretty dedicated to reviewing these items and, and dealing, um, with topics sometimes that are not popular with the folks in the audience, so, um, I appreciate it. As a taxpayer of Pennington County, thank you very much.
Thanks, Rich.
Item nineteen, adjournment, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion and second, Travis is on it today, thank you. Further discussion? Motion and second, Travis is on it today. Thank you. Further discussion? Noting none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.